Stand. Young people, we're gonna start our day at this meeting the same way you start your day with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is over here. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And on this 9/11, let's begin our evening in a moment of silence. Welcome to our meeting. It's good to see all these bright young faces. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is a time for public comment prior to action items on our agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure that our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
I move to get out the agenda.
A motion from Ms. Bynum, second from Mr. Grove. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered, report from our school board liaison.
Is this, is this good?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So, on the 30th of last month, we had a peer mentor training. So, so our juniors and seniors will be mentoring the eighth graders that just came into our school and our big reveal will be next week as to what eighth graders we have. Our backpack program started again, so we go to the food pantry and we pack food for children that maybe don't get what all they need. And we are now taking a bus to the food pantry from the school, which is a little different than we have been doing. So we have a lot more kids now. There's, we had our football game with fried Oreos, so the class of 2019 was selling fried Oreos on the 7th. We have the Taser Abahannic this past Saturday, which is always a great turnout and we're glad to have everyone there and we were able to serve the people that came and it was a great turnout, a good time. Fall play auditions are today and tomorrow for drama and we're setting up part of the SPOE society, which hasn't been really on track, but now we're gonna start it up again so drama kids can be a part of the SPOE society. If the weather holds out, we'll have a cross-country meet tomorrow along with our varsity football game that's been moved from Friday to tomorrow. There's no school for students on Monday and the eighth graders will take a trip to Verdun this month. There'd be a car wash for the class of 2019 on the 22nd and homecoming football game is on the 28th with homecoming being the next day on Saturday. Senior picture makeup day is on the 1st of October. Early release is on the 4th. It's teacher work day. Parent-teacher conferences on the 5th of October. In the first nine weeks is the 17th of October. The November 21st through 23rd is our holiday week, Thanksgiving, no school. Early release on the 20th of December. It's the end of the second nine weeks and 21st through the January 4th is our holiday for Christmas and years. That's all I have for you guys today.
Any questions for me?
What is the play that you're doing?
It's written by Mr. Paulette, so it's original.
Oh, okay. It's his original.
Yes.
It's the one act.
Does it have a title yet or do you know the title?
I'm not sure. I'm not in it this year. I was in it last year, but it's, I think it's something with, the title is like Little Girls or something like that. I'm not absolutely sure.
Thanks for being here, Mace. Donations?
I have several to report. The Washington Baptist Church donated book bags, two per grade level, pre-K through 12 year students. Lynn Kjolr donated a trumpet for the band program at the elementary school. TDND Unlimited donated $100 cash for the student lunch accounts. And Tracy Eisenman donated $20 for Mrs. Learn's class to purchase new exercise ball seats.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt minutes from our August 14 meeting? A motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes presented by Ms. Meyer saying aye. Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Mr. Grove?
Sir.
Have you reviewed the?
I did. It looks to be in order and on track. Not overspent yet.
Good. Early on. All right, the consent agenda contains approval of donations, payment of bills, attempts reported, students report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
There'll be discussion.
There usually is no discussion on consent agendas. Do you have a question?
Yes. I had a question on, on the homeschool.
Yep.
And am I reading it right? We had six or seven kids who came back from homeschool. Are you reading that correctly?
Again.
From homeschool.
Enrolled.
Enrolled. Re-enrolled or whatever they did. Is that what I'm saying? Is that what I'm seeing? Well, I think that's notable and in the right direction. I think it's six or seven, two, four, six, six kids who have re-enrolled that were on, went homeschool later.
That's right.
That's the right, the correct direction.
We have a motion on the table from Ms. Bynum. Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Just call me Shannon.
Shannon is your turn.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a lot of people here, so we must be recognizing some kiddos that came, some happy parents, happy faces. So I'm gonna ask the principals to come up for recognition of those students who earned a perfect 600 on their standards of learning test. And if you remember, over the course of the past six years or so, there's been a lot of revision on the standards of learning tests. They used to be the floor and that's the basis of understanding, but now they've really expanded the depth of knowledge on those tests and they're, they're really quite hard. They utilize a lot of higher order thinking and a lot of application skills, technology enhancement and all those things to incorporate all of these other skills, not just content knowledge. So now, the 600 of today is not the same as the 600 it was before, so this is quite an accomplishment and I see a lot of people here, so this is great. All right, Mr. Temple, do you wanna begin?
Sure.
Excellent.
We have nine students that got perfect 600s at the SOLs at the elementary school. So Nathan Geno, I'm sorry, Elias Geno received a 600 on his grade four math SOL.
Can you stay up there? I'm gonna get a picture.
We have Noah Hayward, who also got a 600 on his grade three math SOL. David Locke, who got a 600 on his grade five science SOL. We have Isaac Plaxton. He received a 600 on his Virginia Studies and a 600 on his grade four math SOL. Carmen Pond received a 600 on her grade four math SOL. Madeline Snead received a 600 on her grade three reading SOL. Michaela Steinback received a 600 on her Virginia Studies SOL. Everett Zook received a 600 on his grade four math SOL. And then we had one teacher whose class received all passing, 100% pass rate, and that was Ms. Lila Wolf with her seventh grade reading.
If I can get a quick picture, just have everyone stand closer together. And one to each, and one to one to each.
Good job.
Great work.
Okay, and I'll, now I'll ask Mr. Swindler, principal of the high school, to give out
We have awards for proficiency in our SOL test for both students and we also recognize teachers. The student turnout is gonna be a little bit greater than the teachers', but I'll explain that to you in a moment. But first, I'd like to recognize our students. I believe we only have two of them here tonight, so I'm gonna start with those two. First up, Mr. Alec Petty with a 600 score on his Algebra II SOL. And next up, not to be outdone, Ms. Lauren Petty with a 600 score on her Chemistry SOL. Now, I scanned the crowd real quick. I don't believe these two are in attendance, but next up, we have Ms. Rachel Weghorst, who scored a 600 on her Algebra II SOL. For those of you who don't know, Rachel Weghorst is the defending state champion in girls' cross-country and I know they had practice today for the first time on our course where they have a meet tomorrow and I understand the mud was pretty thick, so it could very well be she's home digging mud out of her cleats. And then also, one last one, Ms. Sarah East, who scored a 600 on her English 11 writing SOL. And Sarah East is, as we speak, about to step onto the volleyball court and squat about 600 kills would be my guess. So how about a round of applause for our Petty here. We also like to recognize our teachers who end up with classes with a 100% SOL success rate. We had quite a few of them, but as is often the case with many of our teachers, they're performing, most of them are performing other duties tonight. I'll explain that as we get through them. First up, Mr. Scott Stevens, who had a 100% pass rate in Algebra I in the fall of 2017 and then again in the spring of 2018. Mr. Stevens is currently getting our football team ready for a rare Wednesday night home game tomorrow night. But Mr. Scott Stevens got 100% pass rate in both semesters last year, pretty good accomplishment. Ms. Sally Shackelford, who had 100% pass rate with geometry last fall and then 100% pass rate with grade eight math in the spring. And Ms. Shackelford is currently with the team that she coaches, Junior Panther Volleyball down at Madison County. Ms. Dawn Roseberry, who got a 100% pass rate in geometry last fall. She could not be here tonight, but again, to be lauded for that accomplishment. Mr. Russell Paulette earned a 100% pass rate for the end of course reading last spring and also earned a 100% pass rate for his writing testing last year. And Mr. Paulette is currently conducting auditions for the Fall BHFL OneNet Competition Play. He's in the auditorium, so if you go out that way, please stop by and congratulate him. Two more, Ms. Sheila Lamb, our dual enrollment English teacher. She got 100% of her students to pass the SOL at her end of course reading test last spring. And then Mr. Dave Nazer, and this one always amazes me, who had a 100% pass rate in chemistry on the SOL. And every teacher will tell you that their particular subject is the toughest one. Sorry, folks, chemistry, that's the one. That's the toughest one. So I apologize that my teachers could not be here tonight. Again, they all have pretty valid excuses. What they're doing now is doing their work with the students that they do after school as diligently as they do during the school day. But if you don't mind, how about we give them a round of applause?
Now, as a surprise, we're all gonna take an SOL test tonight. Are you nervous? You ought to be.
Adults better be.
600? Are you kidding me? Hey, I know that school board meeting is not on the top of your entertainment list, so if you get to the point where you need to just duck out, don't worry about it. Okay? It's okay. We can take a break. I'd like to be able to congratulate you individually or something. Were you planning on leaving anyway? A lot of you were. It's okay. It's okay. I don't take it personally. You might take it personally. So let's just take, take two minutes, right? And say goodnight. All right? I'm sure they appreciate it.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the new transition class, so that's a new class that was added at the elementary school this year, so I'll ask Mr. Temple to come up and Kim Best. Give your presentation about the new class, what it's about and what you've all been doing.
Love your t-shirts.
Oh, look at that shirt.
That logo looks really nice.
But not speaking is not one. So I'm gonna try this without cracking too much. I would first like to say how very grateful I am for the opportunity to be teaching this independent life skills class at the elementary school. I can already see growth in the students in the four weeks that we've been in school. The students are learning valuable people skills that will better prepare them for the years ahead. They will be learning many things in life skills class, daily routines with household chores such as making their beds, doing laundry and helping mom and dad prepare dinner. Each day, we sort and deliver the mail for the teachers. We have been working in making crafts, not only for home, but for our wrapped family as well. Again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to a very successful year with lots of support and encouragement from our RCS family. I know that the life skills class will succeed abundantly and the students would like to present to you with the gift that they have been working very hard to our own lives.
Look, our logo is on cuts and it's on shirts. Ms. Kim, can you tell us how you did that? How'd you do that?
Thank you.
Wow.
Say how your daddy.
Holly, you're gonna make it quickly. This branding, this.
Absolutely.
What are you talking about this one?
Ryan, how'd you do that?
We were forced to do it together. It was called a cricket and we've been making different things with our cricket, the shirts, the cups. We make cups for our staff members. We make coffee mugs to go in our new teacher lounge and so they've been working really hard. And they just like to say why they're enjoying their life in the class.
One brave soul. Speak for everybody.
So, how you been?
It's going good.
Good. How you? The reason why I like it is because Ms. Kim is like one of the nicest teachers ever and she's very kind and sweet and we get to make fun stuff and I want to come to fire there.
It's almost fun. I like who you're hunting.
I like these fans because we get to read cookies. Then we get to be all so bad. Every cheese in my sleep.
I like Ms. Kim's class 'cause she's fun.
Yeah.
There you go.
We get to make chicken. Chicken's very welcome.
Good. Good. Thank you. Thank you. Good work, young people. I could've never spoken in front of a bunch of people when I was your size. Ooh, wait.
They're getting Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Oh, that'll get them.
She's jumping out of his chair. Good.
These are so nice. Wow, excellent.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Chairman, Board, the next item on the agenda, just a quick announcement about School Safety Week. That happens the same as Homecoming Week, September 24th through the 28th, where the schools, through the Sandy Hook Promise Start With Hello program, will be raising awareness about school safety and how really it starts with students and just easy ways to start with hello and including people and including other students in conversations at the lunch table and things like that. So we'll have different activities every day highlighting school safety and how important everybody's role in that is regarding school climate and culture. Also, we are partnering with the sheriff's office to present a school safety forum and that will be September 26th at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. So we'll have folks from the sheriff's office, our SRO, county EMS personnel, social services department, all on a panel-type forum format where we will be able to educate our community about school safety, the issues and challenges we have right now and things that we as educators, when we became educators, don't really, you know, we didn't think we would have to think that way, but there's a lot of things we do have to think about on a daily basis now and we just wanna educate the public about those issues that we're dealing with and also provide a Q and A session with the community about some of these things, because we know there's a lot of questions. We've done a lot of training in the past just two years. One of the hot topics has been our Alice training, which is our active shooter training that all of our staff have gone through now. It's very difficult and it's hard to think about, but overall, it has empowered our staff to be ready for the unthinkable. So fortunately, those are the things we think about, but there's a lot of elements to school safety, so we would like everyone to come out for that, hear the panel. If you have questions, you can raise them in.
I'm glad to hear the Start With Hello is going on this week. That's a great way to begin.
The next item is your batch of homework that you had last month to look through our new policy. There are quite a few changes this time. They're not all just verbiage or updates to the code. A couple of them came up previously in previous board meetings over the past year or so, so I did wanna bring those to your attention really quickly. They are on the docket for approval tonight. One of them, let's see, just happened this past July, is the employment of family members. This was something that was brought to the General Assembly by rural divisions. Teacher shortages are a major issue right now and if you come from rural communities, it's very difficult to find people to employ at your school district that's not related in some way to board members, you know, so there, there is an outcry about that because people in the community were having to leave because of these anti-nepotism rules and they're there for a reason, but there are provisions that you can take to be able to hire as long as the board members don't have anything to do with the hiring process and of course refuse themselves from voting. So that's one of the new policies. That was enacted in July. So that's policy GCCB. And that is something that has come up before, distant relative or applies to son-in-laws, daughter-in-laws and all of the same. Yeah, parents and all that. So that's, that's positive. That's something the rural coalition did bring up because they were having trouble staffing their schools because of that rule, so that's a good thing. Also, something that's come up quite a bit is the lunch, lunch policies and lunch shaming that's been going on across the nation. That's, that came up with us last year where we, very quickly before the policy came out, enacted no lunch shaming at all here. We don't do that. So I've asked Mandy to be here to explain some of those changes in the cafeteria, just to update you on how that looks in Abahannic and why we do things the way we do with lunch shaming policies, policies or if you want to explain some of that.
So one change that we actually started in the middle of last school year was all communication is done between us and the parents. That way, to protect a child's privacy, if they are in the negative, that's communicated between the parents versus in the line every day. Also, for the meal charge, they are allowed to charge. As you see, we have a donation account for very generous donors in the community, but one thing that we do not do are alternative meals, because again, that is shaming in a way. It's identifiable to the student, which could impact them from not going through the line at all, which our main priority is to feed the child, have them ready to learn and the monetary stuff is dealt with between adults. And then another thing that's written in policy from the state, which we have never done, but just is included, is no act of shaming as in, you know, a hand stamp or making them do work. That is nothing that we have ever done or will ever do. So again, our priority is to feed the children and then monetary is between us. One thing that we did add this school year, which so far has helped, is we now have the free and reduced application is available online for families, which we have seen more eligible families apply that haven't in the past, so we're trying to find more ways.
Great. Thanks.
Any questions about that? I know that was a big issue last year and we were one of the first to jump on board on that and make sure we, we had policy in place to take care of that issue. Now, not just to say where we did have some, you know, a little bit of resistance to that just because some people were saying, well, are you letting them off the hook and who's paying for that? And we do have generous donors who help with that. However, there is parts of the policy that say, yes, we, it goes to a point, but then there is written notices because that can be labeled as a type of child abuse if you're not feeding your child. It's neglect. So there's provisions to go down that road if we have to, but that, all of that stated, it's not the child's fault. They don't know anything about that. So we deal with that between us and the parent and no kid should have to deal with that. So no alternative lunches, no PB and J if you don't have, you get bed and entree no matter what, you know? We deal with the financial behind the scenes.
And how is the, the fund administered? I mean, if we just had a donation, can you describe that? People of us, we have a public that knows about that.
So we have a general fund for both elementary and high school since there are different lunch prices. Kind of the format of communication is first an email and then a letter and then a phone call to the parent, just so they're aware. The managers are aware if there's money in the donation account and they kinda know and we really wanna open the communication if, if there's situations in families, if there's ways we can help. So what we'll do is we'll occasionally, for those that haven't been able to bring in money, just incrementally add a little bit here and there. Again, we want it to be used for families truly in need, so we, we wanna be able to help and we're always open if there are families that are willing to talk with us. We wanna try to best meet everyone's needs.
And once against a $10, that triggers the, the communication to, you know, say, hey, you gotta bring your, your account up to speed and things, so. And then usually at the end of the year or something, we've got So, um, and then usually at the end of the year or something, we've got donors that come in and say, I want to pay off whatever debt we have, which is really appreciated. Um, it says a lot about this community who care about our kids, so. Any other questions about this or other policies on your updates?
I G B G. Uh, the virtual courses. We talked last time about credit for virtual courses. And is this, does this cover that or is it something we have to do separately for summer
This one's for regular verified credits during the year. Those ones are a little bit more simple to administer because they're, um, either it's homebound and it's mandated by whatever services you have to provide or it's an alternative to regular courses in this school year.
This is for homebound only?
No, uh, this, well, it deals with homebound, but it's not just that. You can receive standard verified credit from virtual courses during the school year. Usually that's, um, dealt with in, in your schedule. So if you have a conflict, you may take a virtual Virginia during the year. And those ones are free. Those are our free parts of our schedule. Um, but yes, our work group is going to work on how we accept transfer credits for summer courses that stu-, uh, parents pay for over the summer. And that's a offshoot of this because we know we can. It's just how and how they transfer that's going to be the...
I think Koffler and Parkdale, they, they have ways of doing it.
Oh, lots of schools have ways, yeah.
They could steal those.
Yeah. Yep. Actually, I was wondering about, um, the physical activity requirements on wellness. Wellness, it's an I G A E and A F. It states, um, basically, I'm just wondering, especially for middle school, we talked about this a little bit in the last school board meeting. It's, it states grade six to twelve should have a hundred and fifty minutes per week on average during a physical activity and a change from P E, the physical activity in that classroom sitting during the regular school year. And so, um, I'm ha-, I think it's a great direction to go, but I, I would love to ask a little bit, to bring out how we can comply. It's an important, you know, regulation.
That's something we've talked about with Commit to be Fit and the elementary principle and, yes. Yes. So we are, that is on the radar. We have to do it. It's now the goal to be sure we try to get that physical activity in. We are Commit to be Fit, so that's something we've been, um, really striving for, especially integration of kinesthetic movement in the classroom. So kids are not, are actively engaged through movement in the classroom. So, um, that does count as physical activity. So does recess periods, unstructured time and P E. So all of those pieces you can count toward that requirement, so.
And it even said that, I mean, thinking about sort of in the high school, this is for six to twelve and the middle school range, it does list sports and being part, being on a team at the youth.
Inter-year-als, extracurricular, all of that. Opportunities for. Doesn't mean you can compel everybody to have all of it, but you have to provide the opportunities to have at least that much.
There have been issues where with the block scheduling in the high school, there is still like limited, um, because of P E requirements.
Well, that was a, something Mr. Grove brought up last time about winter conditioning and other things. Commit to be Fit could be involved with kids who may not be on the sports teams and may not be getting that active, um, uh, physical activity during the, those types of activities. So what can we do as Commit to be Fit to engage students more, which was the next piece of that grant anyway, was to engage students and families a lot more. So it fits very nicely into the planning of that, so. I think we're moving in the right direction. It's good to see policy going in that direction at the state level, so.
And then I, the other, the other thing that I was looking at was, um, the college and career readiness language. I just really liked that language and I J D. Yeah, um, and, and we have, I just want to, you know, I J D, college and career readiness, the whole new, everything is new in that whole policy. And that's specifically regarding talking about for this K twelve and it includes, you know, career ideas or meeting people in different careers from a young age and seeing applicability to what they're, what they're studying, what's career opportunities. And I think it could be a really good opportunity for some community collaboration and, you know, some groups that people look like.
Eventually, these will all be online, I would assume.
The academic grant plans?
Oh, no, the, the policy. The new policy. Yeah, the new policy.
Yes, yes.
And it, it would be who, I would say, parents to go through and look at the ones that affect their family, their kids. Uh, they're, they're tedious at times, but, but they do give a good explanation of why these things are done the way they are.
But, I mean, we should, we should help them find, I mean, if you printed this thing out, it's the stench.
I understand.
So, so helping folks find things that they're gonna...
Maybe a guide, a parent's guide to the policy?
Well, and there's pieces of this that we highlight. So we saw this coming with the academic career plans profile of the graduate work we've been doing. So last year we enacted the profile of a graduate team who this year is now connecting with a repository of community experts, um, to provide career exploration to all the grade levels as part of that, but also digital portfolios of their academic career planning process throughout their sixth and twelfth grade levels. So, um, they find out what their aptitudes, their interests are. We, um, construct academic career plans with the help of guidance and Headwater's Next Step, and we have Jenny Capso from 4H and this great team and a career coach now from L F C C. So we actually, um, work with the students and it's a fluid plan. It can change based on aptitudes and interests and things, um, to plan up through two years post-secondary for life-ready. Whatever that child is to be life-ready, no longer college prep or it's work-ready, it's job-ready, it's college-ready, it's gap year, whatever your entrepreneurship, whatever it is that fits that student's academic career plan. So we are working toward that direction, but it, it's a great direction. One we're excited about. Um, there's lots of opportunities out there. Vocational trades are back on the map and, um, students are making quite a bit of money out of the gate if they have certifications in, in welding and, um, Google certifications and online courses. So.
And then I just, the part that I thought was interesting was there's an investigation phase in elementary age, which has caused explosive people, but they, so they might not have thought of maybe arcing their family. I just really like that. I like that terminology.
Exploration.
Yeah, there was, there was an investigation thing.
You all did your homework. Good job.
Thank you for that thing.
I couldn't download anything.
If you go to the pages where the policies are at, you can search PDF files for keywords. The question is, do you know what words to look for really? So it's not, it's not...
It's not simple.
It's not simple to see, you know.
Yeah, you can, you can look up attendance and just put in a keyword, attendance, and everything that has to do with attendance will pop up.
Yeah, and when you look at this policies page, it's sections A through L. Yeah.
I mean, it, it's a lot.
It's so much fun.
It has to be a lot.
And you can't, if you have, so, so for example, we don't, it's not a weakness of ours. I don't, I'm not sure I've seen anybody do it, but basically the idea would be, how do I know to search for attendance? I have to search for inside of each of those PDF sections rather than the entire suite. So you can't...
Call us. We'll help you.
Anybody.
It is good stuff, though. We do live and breathe by these things.
If you have a question, just call us.
I used to have a, uh, I used to have a printout of this thing, which was a complete nuisance because of the updates, but I had a parent some, one time say, can I borrow the policies? And I said, sure. They dropped by the house. I gave them the notebook and they said, ooh, sorry, I didn't really, didn't really want that. And I said, well, this is it, you know, this is what you asked for. So, uh, it said, honor us. But at least you can search it now. Before, when it was paper, you couldn't even do that. So if anybody is curious, so...
It's on the school board page of our website. All the policies are listed there. We update them as soon as they're, um, the board approves those. So we work on doing those updates as soon as possible.
Alright. Anything else?
Good students. Um, the next item I have on the agenda is four point five, college savings account project. I was hoping for some things to come into play before the meeting, but we had already posted the agenda, so I didn't want to, you can't remove things at that time. But all I will say is this, that there's a project coming on that we may be able to find some funds for. Um, imagine, just imagine, if every student that came to Rappahannock registered in kindergarten and got a hundred dollars in a college savings account, which then they could maybe earn money throughout their K to twelve experience to guide, um, some of those decisions and help them achieve whatever makes them life-threatening. What if that could happen?
What if that could happen?
And that's about all I can say at this point. Some more things will come together for that.
It's an interesting thing to kick off. And what I've noticed in our families, when we created these accounts for the grandchildren, that when people don't know what to get a child for their birthday or Christmas or whatever, you can say, well, just here's the account. Here's the hyperlink to the, you know, and it ends up accumulating.
Be, be careful away and...
Well, and you as a board thought about that in, in budget planning last year, especially for helping kids who may not be the scholarship children, who may not be the ones or the families who bow out of doing enrollment because maybe you don't have the ability to do that. Um, so we did look into ways of perhaps using that as, also engaging the families in that financial education piece of how important it is to start saving early and, um, how doable it really is. And if, um, we could help in some way and the community could help, uh, we might be able to see kids succeed and go after things they may not have otherwise. So, um, we're excited about the concept at this point, but we'll bring more details as we, there are just a couple more updates that came literally the past week that I, ah, okay, but I can't remove it. So I just want to put the bug in here for you. Alright, uh, four point six, the Head Start update. We are so thankful to the Board of Supervisors for funding the alternative Head Start program, which we are calling First Step. First Step. We have a next step, so we got a first step, um, starting out. Um, but this is a collaboration between C C L C and the schools to provide, and Social Services to provide an alternative to Head Start. Um, as you know, last month, right before school started, we found out that Skyline CAP, um, and the federal dollars that were coming to them for Rappahannock were pulled to be reallocated to other districts that, um, looked like higher need on paper. Um, so we are very happy to say that after we presented this proposal at the Board of Supervisors and got the word out that we may be having the alternative, we did find seventeen students who do qualify for the program and five more that now we have to figure out funding for. But yeah, twenty-two students that meet the guidelines for Head Start. Um, so Skyline CAP had said that there were two that they were listing. So we have data already to show that that was not an accurate picture of the, the poverty levels in Rappahannock. Um, so we are going to do everything we can this year to make sure we can get some dollars back in Rappahannock where they belong. We do have the babies. We do have the, um, the poverty levels that they said we do not. Um, and we're working with the agencies for that and we think we have a great shot at it. Um, but for tonight's purpose, we do have an M O U, um, that we've been working on to, um, start the program and get these kids enrolled. Um, they can start taking them as early as tomorrow if they can. Um, transportation, it looks like, is not going to be an issue where we have to provide, um, the bus routes, but we're making that available because we don't want transportation to be a barrier, uh, for those, those families. Um, so the M O U is here for approval tonight and some folks from C C L C are here to answer questions to if we have any, um, about how that's going to work. Um, but basically, the Board of Supervisors gave, um, a, you know, supplemental appropriation to the school board.
Who was that, by the way? Do you remember approximately?
Um, we asked for a hundred thousand and they gave us fifty-five thousand more than we asked for.
Hundred and fifty-five thousand?
Yes.
And so last month, we said, you know, this is going to have to be our community. Our community needs to decide.
Yes.
What are we going to do with this dilemma, right? Long, not just this year, but really long-term.
Right.
So that is an awesome thing to see, um, from the supervisors. We appreciate it.
On the community support we received, as soon as we put that out there, we got so many calls about, we're really concerned about this. We support, this is important, other than some other things on... So we're, we're with you. We, there are very important things that we have to take care of. And Head Start was one that really a lot of us lost sleep over because we don't leave our families hanging, especially the ones in need like that. So we weren't going to take, you know, for an answer. We worked it out and the Board of Supervisors all came to the table and that was wonderful. We're excited. Any questions about the document? We'd like to get that approved tonight if it is an action item and signed off so we can start getting these kids enrolled. They have already presented themselves with data and applications to C C L C for the program.
And so, yeah, so I read, it's long.
It is. There's a lot of pieces.
And so, um, so, so did you, I just, I'm just saying, did you, did you base this on, you must have based this on a program with some, similar kinds of...
Some of it, but it's so unlike some of the other ones too. So we did have a lot of work we had to do. Um, we did base it on some other MOUs with Skyline. We did send it to our school board attorney, of course, to make sure all the protections were there, um, that need to be there. And, um, yeah, so it came up.
Can you explain, mm, seven, three, C?
Seven, three, C. Can you wait till we get there?
Sure.
Seven, three, C.
Seven Roman numerals.
Seven, oh, Roman numerals.
Seven, seven, virgo, three, X.
I mean, I could read it.
Why don't you read the...
Applicants, it says applicants not eligible for Head Start based on...
Applicants not eligible head, for Head Start based on income level or need by whom R C P S wishes to add as a child and for whom sufficient Head Start funds are available. Can you tell me how that's going to work? Because if you have to qualify for Head Start to get Head Start funds and you don't qualify for Head Start, how do you get Head Start funds? That doesn't seem right to me.
Okay. Do you want to talk about that or do you want me to take that as a bit? You guys can go up to the podium. C C L C folks that have helped us so much, I'm going to get them to meet with us.
That's the paragraph we struggled with.
We just talked about this.
It's been modified. You're, you're very good.
Pardon me?
Scott, you found this stuff?
I read it.
That's the what. Yes. Uh, you want to change, you just change. All right, you've really got a lot of work out.
But that is the, I think what you have, which is the, uh, is the last version of that.
I got the one that's in there.
Right.
The, uh, that section, uh, three is about the selection and it has, I don't know if people can read it on the screen, um, but in addition to the initial children that are going to be selected, and we're just putting that, uh, list together now, um, it says, "From time to time, the party shall review the completed applications." This would be new people that would apply perhaps. And the availability of the remaining Head Start funds. Now, Head Start funds is a terminology that we define and it includes a combination of the initial allocation from the Board of Supervisors. It's about a hundred and fifty-five thousand plus what we are calling additional monies or additional funds that are going to be raised. We already have two pledges towards that. So the, when you say, when it reads Head Start funds, that is nothing from the federal government. That is, that is a term that we've defined to mean the combination of the Board of Supervisors' allocation plus monies that are raised from the community or from whoever we could get them.
And can I add a little bit? Let me say a bit about this issue of eligibility. We're using the Head Start eligibility guidelines from all seventeen, eighteen kids. They all fit that. There's another group of kids that go up to a hundred and fifty percent of poverty, which we're very worried about, and that's what we want to raise money for. There are a few of those that if we raise that money, then we are not moving this up to whatever. It is, there's a clear poverty level, but it is a bit above what the feds have put, because we know how expensive it is to live today. Well, so that's the wording that we are differentiating.
So...
That has to be, doesn't that have to be differentiated in budget somewhere?
Well, that's what happened when we did our joint application process for our V P I, local pre-K and Head Start. That's what would happen and that's where we, we missed this, this time because the application process got skewed. So there were kids in processing that were assumed to be going into the alternative or A program. And if those kids wouldn't have met Head Start, they would have been referred back to the media's eligible for our V P I. Well, not any more V P I, but local V P I. So the eligibility would have been there. So yes, they might have been slightly over, but they would have went to the top of the priority list for the four-year-old program. So you have kids that were left hanging there too, but that's not what the county funds are going to be for. Those are the five. No, no, no. That's the five extra that we still want to be in the preschool experience alternative program. program because that's so important at those developmental levels, but that's what we have to raise for because they wouldn't be initially eligible for that.
That's money raised by another...
Yes.
By other entities.
Right.
But see, but it doesn't say that here.
Yes, if you look in the... Let's see. Section two... Sorry. No, it's in section four, row four. Six, I believe. In the event CCLC secures additional funds from the Rappahannock Benevolent Fund or from any other donor who makes a payment for a particular child, then those will go... Those will be accounted separately. There's also another clause here. As you say, it's only 15 pages, so it can be hard to find, but...
I don't know. It's only 10. Depends on your font.
It's like 30 in my...
I guess I just don't want any... We're going to say that there... These kids need to be qualified, and I'm wholeheartedly in favor of that. I also like the idea of moving towards a separate four and three-year-old program in the coming years. I think that's at the end of the document. That that would be one of the... The school system would do the fours. CCLC would do the threes or something like that.
We haven't gotten there yet.
I understand, but it says it right here.
We're amazed that we got where we did in one month.
But the point being that to co-mingle might create a problem, funds-wise. Does that make sense?
Well, and if we're creating... Well, with Head Start funds, yes. You have to be very, very particular about that.
Right.
These are not Head Start funds. They're local supplementary funds, but they are meant to provide services for kids that would have been Head Start eligible. So that's what we're doing here.
Right. And I assume that's what the funds that the Board of Supervisors dedicated this for. And I just don't want those to get co-mingled with Head Start money or... I mean, not Head Start money, but donor money or whoever.
And that's why also the billing and accounting phase where we have our monthly invoicing, too, that's delineated by per-child amounts in which program and which funds are being used.
By child?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's the way... That's... See, the Benevolent Fund, if they picked up a tuition, that would have to not co-mingle with the county's money in the tuition. I don't know how in the world you're going to... But I'm sure, once you not hear it, I'm sure it can happen.
It's possible that for whatever reason, some of the donations might come to CCLC, and we're going to account for those separately. And additional monies could be... Could come to the school, and they will be accounted for separately. Together, they form the combined money that can fund both the... Those who are under the allocation and the Head Start-like program and others to the set that we can accommodate them. We've calculated... We've identified five additional children who are above the Head Start poverty level and do... And to have them in the program for eight and a half months, the remainder of the school year, will cost just under $43,000. So in the process of trying to raise that's... Some of that as quickly as possible so that some of those... All five of those children...
So that would be separate money from the money that was allocated to the school board to the project.
Exactly. And will... Every penny will be accounted for regardless of how it comes in. And there's a provision for monthly sharing in meetings between...
That's all right.
...the city and... And Mr. Grove, at the bottom of the first page is actually in section one under purpose and funding. It is clear that the responsibility, the lead for raising those additional funds is CCLC's. There's no obligation on the...
I highlighted that.
...on the school system or on the school board to... You've made no commitment to do that. We're taking that on.
No, I just... I just am trying to not have a lot of confusion about January or February.
And so I see it called... My question was, I see it called First Step sometimes, but then there's the Head Start funds because that's what the Board of Supervisors called that? Is that why it's...
No, it's a term we came up with. The collaboration is the program.
Okay.
First Step collaboration is the program, and the Head Start funds are the monies, the combination of the allocation.
I guess that if we're coming in from the outside and there's a thing called Head Start, which is a big federal program, then we're calling our little thing that's not really Head Start. Head Start, that's...
Or we're not. We're calling it the First Step collaboration.
But I mean, it says the Head Start funds in this document.
That's the money. That's just the name of the money.
Because they would have rapid...
But it's not really Head Start money. It's money.
It might make sense of sort of... Okay. It's hard to explain it if we're using it, if we're defining a term that's defined in the nation and then it's defined differently.
We're not using that with the outside world. That's an internal...
Yeah, I just love it. I'll explain it to the outside world easily.
Yes, so the only thing I was saying is why we didn't call it the First Step. We can change it if you like. It would make things clear because that's personal. It's what we own, right? This community owns this thing.
Yeah, it's paid for entirely by the county, right? There's no federal money involved in it.
It could be hard later on to differentiate that for true Head Start money from the person...
In the contract and everything else, in the appendices, that's where the name, you know, comes up as First Step in those...
It's a simple change you make with that in words. In the words, the word documents.
Yes.
If I had my computer here, we could do it in about 30 seconds, so no problem from our point of view.
They had to see that. It would be clearer, I think, in the long run.
Yeah.
But don't give federal government a credit when they don't.
Yeah, right. It works.
Yeah. Well, the fact is, you know, next year or two years, three years from now, they may decide to do it again. Give it back to us. And then...
Well, and the reason, too, I mean, everyone is associating this program with what it's been Head Start. So I think it's more understandable if they're calling it that from now. It is changing, but it's the same services that are going to be provided in the alternative. So it might be easier to explain because that's the way we've been saying it the whole time, is it's the Head Start alternative.
But this is a reflection point. We're not having Head Start. We're starting a different program that is analogous to Head Start. This is the time to change it, rather than realizing that this is...
You could call it First Step hyphens or First Step parentheses.
Formally known as...
The artist.
Government expertise.
To and for now. I think that that's a good judgment, and we need to say, "We're going to... We need to approve something tonight."
We will.
And we will approve something tonight.
Right.
But the changing of that particular word in there to make sure we're clear that this is a locally owned program at this particular point, I think is important. And so I would agree. We just change all occurrences of one to the other.
And make it definitive that these are not intermingled pieces. Then there's one more thing that I...
Not question, but sure, I guess, is that...
I know that there's a specific or was Head Start curriculum for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, correct? Specific curriculum. But that's not...
It says it in the curriculum.
Yep. Created curriculum.
I didn't see that in here. Is it in here?
It's in there.
I missed it.
Yep, yep, yep.
My other question.
And at the end, just a school question that's not going to change anything. This person, the kind of headwinds, I mean, a child service coordinator, that is not a public... That's a CCLC full employee position.
We have money from a private foundation for that position, and we will be advertising that after that.
Is that going to be a part-time position, I would assume?
It usually is with Head Start. We have to make that determination with Head Not.
But that's a B-dasher.
Right. It'll be at least Head Not.
Pardon?
It'll be at least Head Not.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
I mean, you may be able to hire somebody that could work with 20 other kids. It would be wonderful.
It is a lot of work in one month, because you guys have done a great job. A lot of work.
Right.
And for the sake of, you know, little people with no voice, so it's really appreciated. And, I mean, all around, everybody came up to bat, and all we're sitting here is arguing about words and approving something. So great work, you know? And to the community, thanks for standing behind it. And to the supervisors, thanks for approving and funding this thing. It left us at a lurch, right? It was a... No way to treat little people.
This is truly a win-win.
It is.
Something are...
I think I captured that far enough. Okay? Are we good?
We are good, and that concludes this superintendent report.
Thank you. Three reports from Headwaters representative?
Yes, it's a busy month for Headwaters. Headwaters Board of Directors met on August 20th. There was an extension discussion of Head Start, which is a change of resolution, but they were very concerned about the board, and it was great to see this behind the scenes work going on. There were funding requests that Dr. Grimsley made for conference seats for two staff for the VASC conference, as well as for transportation for students to the SCBI Conservation Discovery Day in October for a bus of 80 kids to go to school. The after-school enrichment program will begin later this September, and the program's going to be two days a week, but they are exploring making it more days, maybe up to four days, depending on what the demand is in those surveying families to see about that. The big piste de resistance, Headwaters held their 24th anniversary Taste of Rappahannock fundraiser dinner at Clip Mulholland's barn, September 8th, this past Saturday. Many of us were there. It was a great success, as always, and a big community effort. Local chefs, farmers, and volunteers pulling together a great and tasty event. Patrons bid high and often on the many donated auction items. Lots of RCPS staff and students were there and set up during the week. The band kids assisted with harking with smiles and their band five shirts on. They set... People set tables. People served, poured wine and coffee, ensured safety during the event, and even wiped out drips from the ceiling that were coming down during the rainstorms. It was nice to have the safety marshals there. Patrons... And then I just wanted to quickly... Here's a list of the staff volunteers that I'd like you all to recognize. There are about 20 staff people. Matt Hummel, Elaine McCabe, Catherine Todd, Julie Ruth, Tammy Racer, Jennifer Deal, Linda Way, Burnett Rogers, Allison Cross, Ben Temple, Dave Mazer, who's also on the board, Jason Guera, headed up the band kids, Mike Myers, Karen Sandburn, Michelle Papa, Danny Khan, James Sharp, Sandy Gillickham, Perk Stru, of course, with all of his volunteer students, Sam Grimsley, and myself, we all volunteered. And also Mr. Grove and Mr. Mills on his delightful life.
Willingly ate whatever was...
And also Mrs. Johnson was there, and it was... So that's the report on that. The last is an upcoming event that's sponsored by Headwaters, and I'm going to put it up here.
Pretty good flyer.
We're having... I emailed to board members about a volunteer opportunity because we're going to have on September 20th, the Mobile Ed Production Steam Museum, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math Museum is coming, and we have some volunteers already. We could take more. Every kid at the whole elementary school is going to come for a 40-minute session during school and have a chance. There's 12 hands-on stations that will be there, and then we'll also have an evening program. I'd love to... Who could invite our friends to the little students specifically to come because it's open to the public. There are 12 people at private schools and other schools around, and who can showcase our school.
Good idea. It's a great idea.
Yeah, and thank you for this is through an education enrichment grant that we put together at the elementary school. So there's a lot going on, and we thank Headwaters for everything. One thing... I just wanted to share one quick conversation I had with one of the teachers who volunteered, and he said, "I love... I just love coming here because I get to see the students at work and just get a glimpse of them, you know, when they're as sort of almost grown-up kids. It's a great opportunity for them." You know, I think it was very sweet to hear that because we have such great staff.
Put the bull together.
Yeah, exactly. So thanks.
It was interesting because the students, they would be serving hors d'oeuvres, but they didn't just serve the hors d'oeuvre. They're engaging in conversation with you.
And if they remembered you liked hamburgers, they kept coming back.
I liked it.
It's great of them again. I'm sure Kevin's exhausted.
Yeah. That's the report.
It's been a busy month, a great month.
Yeah.
A great opportunity at the end of the month. MBTS?
We did meet... We meet next Thursday, not this Sunday. And I will, once again, send Dr. Grimsley... She goes anyway, then in my stead, because then we're starting apple butter season.
Oh.
We're doing apple butter next Thursday.
Are you going to Peaseltown today?
Peaseltown on Friday. Cutting apples on Thursday.
All right. Thank you. The next item is the VSPA Media Honor Roll. The board has put together a nomination resolution for Rappahannock News, and it's here tonight. I believe we're actually... Yep, it's on the action items, and we've had opportunity to read that. There's any comments or questions?
I would like to say a lot of this came out of the relationship with the newspaper that Holly has cultivated in public relations and digital communications over the past couple of years. So it's been a great relationship, a lot of coverage of the schools, and so we're very happy.
I appreciate it. So, all right, moving on to Public Comments. There are some in the public that would like to speak to the board this evening. If you could rise, come to the podium, tell us your name. If you don't know the district, your problem will help you out. We'd like to know. Give me your address.
I'm from the Hampton District and also the co-chair of Headwaters, and I'm mainly here to say thank you. Our speaker, Dr. Grimsley, and I think almost everybody sitting at that table was involved, and many more of you in the audience. And we do this for the schools, but we couldn't do it without the school, without the help of the teachers and the administrators, and it's just a great feeling, and I just wanted to say thank you.
There's a lot of energy at that.
You should have been there Sunday morning. There's more energy hanging out.
Yeah, I know.
Today, he was picking up a sock.
Today, yeah. A sock bucket today.
I'm from Wakefield District, and I'm the executive director of Headwaters, as most of you know. I just had to add a few more thank yous in there. Ms. Bynum, who did a great list, just want to add a couple more in there. Robin Bolt for her help. She helped hook things up. She helped us get our projector together, so we were able to do a great presentation. Uh, one of the first happy smiling faces you saw when you walked in was our own Mr. Swindler, um, wonderful, welcoming, both he and Mrs. Swindler were there. Uh, Mr. Temple was wonderful in all the, uh, help that he gave us, and, um, someone who wasn't, I don't think, totally there, but was very helping out, Mr. Grove, thank you so much for opening up the kitchen for us to be able to use rice machine and everything else that we needed. The staff, just in general, was just very open, and said whatever you needed, you know, we're very keen to get it, so, thanks you all very much for your help, we appreciate it.
All right. Yes? Are you speaking, or are you heading home?
No, I'm speaking.
There you go, let's see.
Hello, thank you for letting me talk tonight. Uh, my name is Lisa Glenny, I'm from the Jackson District. Uh, I have a certified teacher in both New York State and Virginia. I started my career in the Head Start, doing Head Start, so, it was interesting to hear all that tonight. Um, can I please take you back a week and talk about the board supervisor's meeting, and I'm curious to, um, see if anyone else can review the connector trail and your, your thoughts of that, and if anything has changed, and, um, so I'd like to see if you guys have rethought that idea, especially in terms of the safety of the school, because I've been in a lot of schools, I've visited a lot of schools, and I cannot recall any that needed, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, any that needed a, a safety access, and, I mean, some of those schools were ringed by, um, you know, fence, that's, it's very inaccessible to movement of people. Um, so I was hoping that you would please review that, and your thoughts about that, if you would consider to, um, drop your support for it, because, um, there's a lot of community members that just do not see a need for that, and we just feel that, that's, you know, like, Head Start's just one of them, there's so many more things that our kids need. There's kids in this, this county, as you know, that just, they're not getting enough food every day. So I think the very basics is what we should take care of first. Um, okay, um, and, uh, I hope you all watched the videos, or, I know Shannon was there, so, yeah, so thank you for that. And, um, you know, I just wish you would consider that things would really be in this county, okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Peggy Eben, and I live in the Piedmont District. I moved to Rappahannock County with my two daughters in the early 1980s, from the Pittsburgh area. I have always supported Rappahannock County Schools' plan of expansion. My youngest daughter graduated from the high school, has been my oldest grandson. My youngest grandson is presently enrolled in the elementary school. Uh, I'm not usually one to speak out about school decisions and changes, however, such is not the case with the school connected by the trail. I have many, many concerns regarding the safety, maintenance, and lack of overall harmony with regards to this project. I am very, I feel very strongly that this school board should not allow the proposed trail to be built between our schools. There are too many unanswered questions that could, too many questions that could put our children, our teachers, and our community in harm's way. Therefore, I respectfully request that you withdraw your support for the connector trail plan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can we ask questions when we get up there?
I'm sure, yeah, I think we'll probably, you know, probably what we'll do is have opportunity and new business for the board, if they want to comment on anything related to that. Go ahead.
My name is Catherine Bader, and I'm from the Piedmont District. Bader, it's B-A-A-D-E-R.
Thanks.
And so, I would like to also comment on the bike trail. I've been very disturbed by all the, I've never seen our county so divided on an issue before, and very disturbed that people who oppose the bike trail are against the children and against their health, and, you know, the whole program you have, Fit to Be Fit, I think is a, amazing program, and I sit here tonight and look at all the wonderful programs that are going on in the school. And I have to say that I'm very passionate about the children in Rappahannock, you know, it's very dear to my heart, and I, I work very hard to support the school and the athletic programs, but I'm very concerned about the bike trail. And number one, it's been presented that the school board fully backs the bike trail. There was, and that's my question, there was a survey that went out last fall, which was supposedly overwhelming, the parents said, "Yes, we want the bike trail," but I was really wondering, and this is positive intent, because I think if you go to the source and you ask the questions, because as we know, a lot of people are saying the facts are changing, I was wondering what the percent of the feedback you've had, what return did you have on the survey, how many parents actually responded to that survey, and also, what were the percentage that were for and against? So, this is one of my main concerns, is that, number one, Rappahannock County taxes, the income that we're bringing in is only X percent, and I have always been a big proponent of spending, you know, responsibly, but spending in the school systems. I see how our school system has been elevated since when I graduated here, and I won't give a year, but anyhow, if we go forward with a program that doesn't have a cap on it, that was sold to us as being no taxpayer money spent, and this is what I said in the first menning, men, meeting that I went to, what does that mean for our school system? If we have X amount of money to spend in the county, and we get involved in a program that has major overruns, that's gonna impact your budget. The second thing is, there has never been, we talk about the money for the project, but we haven't talked about once the project is up and running. There's no VDOT, to my knowledge, site survey, that says that there's a safe place for those young kids riding that bike to cross Rock Mill's Road. That's a very dangerous road, with the fact that you have VDOT there, and you have the dump there. It's also been noted that there's a very bad problem with bears and wildlife in that area because of the dump. The second question, besides that safety concern, is there's no report from the Rappahannock County Sheriff or EMS saying how to respond to issues there. Is it really safe? So we've asked for that report, and we've asked for a VDOT report. So, my concern is that I'm not against the kids, and I'm not against the health and the welfare, but I think there's safety issues here that should be looked at, and I also think it can negatively impact your budget. So I would also very respectfully request that you all take a little longer, harder look at your endorsement. I am not against the bike trail, I am against this bike trail, because I don't think it's been thought out from beginning to end, and a well-executed plan is there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't get your district, but it's Piedmont. I haven't received a message from you, thanks for letting me know.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name is, uh, Sherwon Propper, um, I vote in Sperryville, I guess that's Piedmont District. Um, the only thing that I, I really thought it was a great idea when, uh, this was first presented about the bike trail, they said from Washington to Sperryville, I thought, wow, that would be awesome, you know, just to have the trail go from Sperryville to Washington, and, and then I heard that it's like a million dollars a mile to go from Sperryville to Washington. I thought, how could that be? Because I've seen other bike trails just along the edge of the road, um, I thought that would be really nice, because, you know, that's something that I would really like to see, is, you know, just, I guess it's not 10 feet wide, but it's wide enough for a bike to safely go there. So I thought, okay, that's, that's great, but then, uh, at the last meeting that we had over at the elementary, I mean, um, in the big auditorium over there, um, I found out that the bike trail actually goes around behind the, um, state shed. And I was thinking, did you consider that the price of moving the state shed fence over? Because it goes right, right next to my sister's house there, so, you, the fence would have to be moved over, so that's an expense, because, um, for the trail to go through there, because they said it wouldn't involve anybody else's property, it would be on state property, so the fence would have to be moved over. And my sister's well is less than 20 feet from the fence, and if the path is 10 feet wide, then it would be, they would probably have to put in another well for my sister, so that would be another expense. So I was just wondering, um, are they planning on, if they do get the bike trail, are they planning on moving that fence over? Because that would be a, I would think, a tremendous expense to move that chain-link fence. And Ann Speaker is right there, too, she has her horses there, so they would have to figure out something about that, I don't know what kind of fence they would put there, because I guess it would have to be two fences, you would have between the moved-over, um, state shed fence, and also another fence, because the horses, you know, you can't have the horses running over people going through there, and she has her horses there in that field. So, there would be two separate fences beside the trail, so it would have to really move over a lot. So did anybody consider moving the fence expense? And my sister's kind of a little trigger-happy, but anyway. I don't want any accidents to happen. She's, she's, uh, it, it's been a long story, because she's, um, it's been a long time for her to get the, the wheel strength settled, she spent double-digits thousands of dollars to get herself situated in a home that was left to her, and, uh, she's very proud of it, she keeps mowed well, keeps cleaned out well, and, uh, so, just running it by you. So what do you think about, how much would it cost to have that fence moved over?
I think, uh, what we'll do, we'll explain our role in the project, uh, before we get too much further tonight, all right?
Okay, well, it's just a thought, I was just wondering how much another well and moving the fence would be. All right, thank you, sir.
No idea.
All right, well, see, that's, that's another question.
That's not my project.
Another question, and the bears are pretty thick back there, she sees them in her yard every night, and she's right against that fence.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, we're gonna move on to take care of our action items. Is there a motion to approve the policy updates that were presented to us last month, and discussed this evening, a motion to approve?
Good move.
We have a motion for, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Byden, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close, no? Ms. Water, this motion is the approval of the Childcare and Learning Center Memorandum of Understanding with the suggested application this evening of changing the Head Start phrase to be First Step throughout the document. Is there a motion to that effect?
There's a rule.
We have a motion, Ms. Byden, is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove, is there any discussion? I just want to make sure that you know how much I appreciate that, that amount of work being accomplished so quickly, for the sake of, of those little people.
Superintendent figures, yeah. Get back together.
It's been a great joint effort, but it's, uh, it's much appreciated, on all parties. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close, no? Ms. Water, uh, is there a motion to approve the VSPA Media Honor Roll Resolution? Good move. Motion, Mr. Grove?
Second.
And the second, Ms. Byden, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close, no? Ms. Water, new business? Do you have something for the business group?
Um, I, I have a little something in the new business, yeah.
Why don't you go and do that?
Yeah, well, we are, um, it's sort of a tag-on to what I recorded last time, about, about our, our exploration of using our, our existing outdoor spaces at school, and just wanted to give you all an update on that. Um, we had a survey conducted within our staff about the use, the potential use of our courtyard at the elementary school, and our, the outdoor classroom at our elementary school, and we have a group actively working along with Robin Bolt. Um, I'm, I'm using those outdoor spaces that we have accessible, that are on our school property, and we really are motivated to, to, to work with the community and with educators to make the program, we're having partnerships with the master gardeners, with the master naturalists, and, and we have, we have some volunteers ready to get started on the program. So I just, I, I have, I just wanted to let the board members know, I have the survey, if you'd like a copy of it, because it's interesting, it's, overall, it shows that our staff is really interested in using our outdoor spaces more, and...
Is it online?
It's, it's not online, but I've, I've, I have, I have a copy of it. But, um, yeah, it's not online, I don't want to go through the whole, the whole thing, but it's, it's just, um, it's, it's really, you know, there are a lot of staff who's very interested in using our outdoor spaces, and we're getting going on that, so, I'll just report that.
All right, thanks. Um, is there anything else, other than trail talk?
I was wondering, maybe the superintendent could give us a little update on the reasons they talked about, like, the library, and, uh, the credits we talked about, the credits we talked about.
And the winter conditioning, we talked about that in our policy. Um, li, extended library hours, that was brought up as a, um, an item that some students had asked about, um, so we are going to try that, starting next week on Thursdays, we're gonna have our high school library open for students until 5:00, to see how many we have that want to come for after-school, maybe in between practices, get some homework done, and, um, so we have a staff member who's willing to step up to do that, so. Um, we'll try it out, see how those of us five, or we'll train on, so, we'll start that next week.
Trail talk. So, I don't have anything prepared for this, I just want you to know, uh, a year ago about, I don't remember the exact date.
September 17.
September 17, it was a year ago. So, uh, it was presented to this body, a concept, uh, for a trail that would go across school property, uh, that was gonna get, at the time, get promoted in the community, uh, but the trail crossed and required an easement across school property, therefore required, before any progress could get made at all, required some type of, uh, decision by the board, which came, which comes in the form of a resolution, right, which the board generated as our approval, you guys can modulate this. This is, this is what I'm, what I'm recalling, so, you weren't, I missed that.
But I was hearing.
Anyway, so, we evaluated this, I just want you to know what we were thinking a year ago, and, and there may be other things, this is just what I remember. Um, this was a project, in concept, that had no fiscal impact on the school, and it was promoted as something that would never have a fiscal impact on the school. Now, it's, it's a legitimate comment, that there's a limited pot of money, and it's all gonna come from somewhere, right? But, um, at the time, the presentation was, "This is not a school project, we're simply giving easement, uh, for a community, uh, action to cross our land," which we have to do, it's owned by the school board. So there was that. Uh, we looked at the project as something that had promised for help, for student body and our teachers and the public, and it was something that would draw the community gallo, uh, which, you know, we need, if, if there was the potential for that, we were gonna try to promote that type of thing, which Commit to Be Fit also does. So it was consistent with the philosophy that we were adopting at the table, it was an easy thing, because I, I looked at it, it has no fiscal impact to the school, and thinking, why would I, so here was the question I had, why would I vote against this thing? I have nothing to lose, right? That was a year ago. Certainly, you know, a lot of people have brought up risk items that need to be considered by us, uh, and possibly, you know, it could change the direction of the board, I don't know, we haven't talked about it, we haven't discussed it, debated it. To me, the debate that was happening, uh, you know, there are people that said, "Oh, you're anti-child," and I don't believe, I don't believe that, nobody's anti-child, it's, uh, that's crazy talk. Um, and I'm not, you know, I, I generally don't want to get pulled into a us and them thing, because to me, uh, if it doesn't cost me anything, and there's nothing... to me, if it doesn't cost me anything and there's nothing but benefits to the school system, then why would I say no? So, generally, a lot of good points raised that I've been reading in the paper and I've heard here tonight, very consistent points, which the board will consider, the safety meeting will consider, and we'll go from there. You know, we could ask the board next month if they're willing to back off of the, and deny the resolution that we made a year ago, and see where it goes. I haven't talked to anybody about it, but that's as far as it's gotten. I need you to know that we don't, we never had anything to do with a plan, we saw the route generally, because it was in concept, we didn't talk to anybody about moving fences or anything, because we were just providing easement. Yeah. So, I don't know about wells or bears or how it's going to cross Rock Mill's Road, very good questions, all good things for us to consider and reconsider, and much appreciated thought that's gone into it. So, we'll be doing that over the next months. But from our perspective, the last thing I recall was, "Why would I say no?" Right? So, I'm sure if anybody else wants to contribute to that, that was basically what I remember about our line of thinking.
I think you're on target.
Yes, that's true. Didn't cost us anything, why should we object?
Right. And again, you know, we're, we're not a taxing body, although meetings can seem taxing to you, taxing also, we're not a taxing body, we generally said this, you know, the supervisor will figure this out somehow. However the community's going to execute this thing, that's not our task. We're tasked with the school system and the good, the good to the children, and the good stewards of the money that's given us by the supervisor, so, and meeting regulations and mandates that are unfunded from the state, that's our job. So, that's what we did with the trail project. I just want you to know what our perspective was, and is, until we change it.
And I wasn't on the board at the time, I was the only non-board member or school employee probably in the room, because I did come through a year of school board meetings before running towards the board, so I could hopefully be part of, understand what's going on. And the presentation that I recall, and I haven't seen it since a year ago, but it had, it had a tentative route, I remember everybody talking about if there is cost to the school, and I remember hearing the benefits were security benefits, sports benefits, and outdoor activity benefits. Those were the, that was, that was the, I did go to a community meeting that happened in Sperryville, where there were lots of, lots of maps, and from the perspective of someone who's never drawn out a plan, it looked like, I mean, they're, they're, it looked pretty detailed to me, which is detailed as any map, so that's all that I, that's what, but I do remember there being maps put out at this meeting, and a flash on the screen, and so, that's all I remember.
But there are benefits and risks, which are, that are, that are, yeah, that are discussion in the community, and it's a good thing for us to review, so over the next month, we'll take a look. Yeah? So, that's where we stand with that, I don't know what else to say. That's, that's where we were a year ago, that's where we are today. And thank you for commenting. Anything else? Our next regularly scheduled school meeting is on October the 9th at 6:30 PM in the same location. At this time, I entertain a motion, we move into closed session.
We move the board to convene in closed session for a following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointments of staff for professional coaching, substitute teaching positions for student, Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711, A1.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
A second.
And a second, Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close, no? So, move. The board is in closed session, we'll give you a few minutes in recess to say goodnight, and we're going to go into-